Here's one beer on.
Yeah.
A little bit.
Yeah, so. All right, we'll call a meeting to order and good morning, everybody. Okay, we'll prove the agenda, any changes in. Okay. Okay, we have motion in a second, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous carries, all right, for the minutes from May eight.
The, to me, motion to approve. I'll second.
Okay, we have a second, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right. unanimous motion carries, all right, general public concern, anybody have any general public concerns? I don't see anybody, okay. Let's move on to Don, you're up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Downroading work from Mariana. And we have a road crossing on Kelly Road, P nineteen, between the both of us in Humboldt County. And it exists for a little over nine years. And we'd like to renew that for another ten year period. Not aware of any controversies or concerns regarding the property, but you know, so. I need your signature on the agreement in order to, to extend it, so. Any questions or comments?
Not had any accidents or anything like that in there.
None that I were. Spoke to the family engineering.
Never heard anything about it. Uh, the few times that I've been by where you've been coming up to the road, they, they stop and wait. And if there's any vehicle within. After three quarters of a mile, they'll, they wait until they're gone before they cross, so.
Crossing's holding up good.
Crossing's holding up good, we're scheduled to overlay that particular road. Uh, three summers from now, maybe four summers from now. So that'll be coming up, I told Khan, I said, the only thing that I see coming beyond that is maybe a bike path.
Maybe.
Yeah, Gilmore's trying to figure out how to get up to the Tree Rivers Trail. And they like the idea of going up along P nineteen. Uh, to connect to it, so there might be a, an additional bike trail that crosses that, but otherwise. As far as everything on their end. They've been great, I have no complaints.
Okay.
So do they still stop traffic when they're blasting? Yeah, in that area. Yeah, we're just. Oh, you can kind of see it on your map, there we've got about. Eight, about six, and then say back with that. Probably eighty, probably eighty acres to fill for that.
There's a pretty big hole there already.
Yes. It's been a good location for us.
Yeah, I just go by there about two weeks ago, two months ago.
Saturday morning I drove by, looked like you guys had a bunch of holes drilled getting ready to blast again.
Round the hill. And we've got a contractor in fact, that's, you know, covering some Roger Forest, they would be about there.
So this amendment, agreement, it just. Had a ten year lifespan.
Yeah.
And it needs to be re-upped, and it'd be another ten year lifespan, same agreement.
That's correct, I, I mean, literally just extends it for additional ten years without changing any of the. Circumstances.
Seeing as how it's worked well for the past ten, I make a motion that we approve the crossing agreement. Uh, with Martin Marietta for another, and get that signed and move forward.
Who would these, you're the supervisor, you're the.
Yeah. Getting the chair.
I'm the chair.
But we have to, if it's on our agenda, we have to prove it.
All have to prove it.
Yeah. And Sandy will sign it.
Discuss it.
Okay, all right, um, we got a motion in a second, any other discussion?
Thank you, it's been going good also.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries, I will sign their. Request and want it on our file too. Do you want me to send it to you, or?
That's fine.
Now?
Uh, either way. I, I need to take the quote out of county, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Um, so, um, we need to get Williams.
Well, correct.
His signature. For its official.
That's correct.
Okay, there's not been any issues.
Is he in the area?
No, we, uh. Bill Gayham was the division president for Long County, retired. And now it's Bill Kedrasik, but he's in Indiana, so there's been some reorganization within Marner Ed. We're always expanding, so.
Okay, so when we get Pocahontas, their signature, then we'll need to get. You have to scan it, get them to sign it, and, right? Yeah, if you could send it to us. And then send it back to.
Sure.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna make a copy, just let me have a cop. Yeah. Okay. Perfect, thank you, Trish.
We kind of makes that decision on overlaying that road, Ben, is the Pocahontas or us, is it kind of a joint decision, what, do we do it, or?
Joint decision, uh, Pocahontas is responsible for everything, Gilmore City South, we're responsible.
Oh, is that how you split it?
Gilmore North.
Okay.
Uh, so a conversation between Jack and myself. Two, three years ago was that the condition of P nineteen is starting to crack and rut bad enough that we'll overlay in that.
Okay.
So we put it on a five year plan.
Got you, all right. Done.
All right, perfect, okay, Ben. You are up, Trish is making a copy of that and she'll get it to you then. Okay.
Morning.
I'm a little, I'm a little late on the draw this morning, I haven't had my full coffee.
Let me on the agenda.
I saw that, I'm like.
Where's?
Um, the first item that I've got on the agenda is to approve an application to work in the counties right away. For Mid-American, to install new poles and go underground at the intersection of C forty-nine and P nineteen. Um. They've got a. Head on the west side of the road and a pole on the east side of the road, everything's marked out, out there. Uh, they're gonna bore underneath P nineteen on the north side of C forty-nine.
Well, I think it looks good.
Yeah, everything looks good.
Motion that to approve that application for Mid-America to do said work. I'll second.
Okay, the motion in a second, any discussion? Good, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any unanimous that carries?
The second item that I've got on the agenda is to approve an application to work in the county right away for Midland Power. To rebuild overhead lines. On Elm Avenue and Florida Avenue, north of C twenty, so it's a one mile stretch. Uh, just east of Odison. Between a hundredth and a hundred and tenth street on Elm and Florida.
They're rebuilding?
They're rebuilding, they're, they're gonna respam, they're gonna put new poles in and respam the line.
The same existing lines, they're not adding anything that.
Yeah, they're not, it's just gonna, for, because they're, because they're putting brand new poles in and they're respanding everything. They reapply for another permit, but there's still fence on a lot of this property and they're staying at the back of our right away.
There again, no issues with that, I'd make the motion to approve that application as well. I'll second.
Maybe a motion in a second, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, unanimous that carries?
The third item that I've got on the agenda is also an application to work in the county right away. For RNG Electric. Um, he's got. Three driveways in Avery Township, section twenty. That have material piled on either side of the coverts. And, uh, they would like to remove that material, I told them that we could put a work order in. And we could do the work. That, he said that he's fine just dipping it out with this.
Just small back. What type of material?
It's still, so, so that's blown in from the field.
Yeah, that happens.
Yeah. So.
Then you're talking, is it Jeff, is it him?
Yeah, it's, uh, uh, Joe Bitsum, it's Kim, my office manager, uh, her husband, Joe. Is the hired hand.
Yeah.
For Jeff. But he's the one that would actually be doing the work.
Yeah, we're good with what they're doing, so, I'll make the motion for, uh. On case.
Oh, okay.
Motion in a second, any other discussion?
We need to call in their locate.
Yes, they did.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Carries, unanimous, okay.
The next item that I've got on the agenda is discussion on hiring a summer intern. Uh, included a copy of the girl's. Uh, resume. She graduated from Eagle Grove. Last year in May, she's graduating currently from Iowa Central with her, uh, AS and AA. She's a four point O student, she's very smart, she's valedict, valedictorian at Eagle Grove. She is in the process of, she's got her application into the Air National Guard and is waiting on her. Um, MEPS, I believe, is what it is. Um. She's anticipating being accepted into that program in August. She's looking for an internship. For the summer, um. I talked to Dave, he's got a list of things that. He can. Train her on, and we've got enough construction. Going on this year that she'll basically get her feet wet. Uh, we've got the one mile stretch paving on Sheldon Park. Uh, box cover project up by Bode and the bridge project down here on Lone Tree that she'd get to experience a little bit of everything that we do here at the county. Um.
This paid position?
This would be a paid position. Um. As far as wage. I'd be looking anywhere from. Eighteen to twenty bucks an hour.
This be forty dollar a week?
Roughly, yeah.
For timeframe being about.
Or timeframe being probably starting next week, going through. The first week in August, so.
July.
Yeah, two and a half, roughly. So.
Some, I mean, obviously, then you can find something important to do, gain some experience, and that's what she was really looking for before she moved forward.
She's looking for experience, uh, we would be able to utilize her. By, uh, training her on how to do GPS surveying.
Something she's interested in.
She could start going out and, and conducting surveys, obviously Dave would. Be out there training her for the first couple.
Mm-hmm.
But then beyond that, Dave could continue on doing driveways, start doing, uh, design. Of projects while she's continuing to.
Mm-hmm.
Work through surveys that we've got on our five year plan.
By looking at her resume, she's fairly ambitious the way it looks, so.
Yeah.
And then David's her.
Dave would be her immediate supervisor.
And then he'll do all the paperwork for what needs to be turned in for the school and everything for internship.
Yes, yeah.
So if you don't have any problems with it, I sure don't think we would. Have a problem with it, so, I guess I would entertain the. Motion to hire and get her. Date that she's planning on working towards, so we have an idea. What we've been accomplishing, what she. Feels like, uh. You said something about the Air National Guard?
Yes.
Cause she has the.
She's in, uh, uh, like I said, the MEPS process right now, where she's turning in all of her. Uh, past medical history, and then at some point she's gonna have to go in and do actual physical tests. For them before she can be accepted.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I explained to her that this is obviously a, a position with, without benefits beyond wage, so if she. Doesn't show up for work that day because she's got a. Medical test for Air National Guard, she just doesn't get paid.
Yeah, yeah, well, that should work out well.
I think so.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, any other discussion?
Discussion on wage.
Well, I, I think we, he's a very good person.
Yep, especially one that she approached us on.
Yeah, yeah. I think.
I'd agree, okay. All right, so first you wanna make that part of your motion, eighteen dollars per hour.
I'll add the, with.
Okay.
And the chair's request, I'll do that.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, unanimous. That chair, you know, that's just a hard.
I'm snooping, but is she interested in being like pilot, or, I mean, what, what's? Kind of.
I think that's her eventual goal.
So cool, I mean, I'm.
Yeah.
It's nice to see.
She seemed.
I don't want anybody to print something and, and make a negative comment, but you can see a kid in high school, but it's that ambitious, but has.
Making it far ahead.
Desire that she wants to do something like that.
I would say she has goals and, and she has. Her steps figured out, I mean, she's. More prepared than I was when I was eighteen or nineteen.
That's good.
I have to like snooping on. From our friend over in. Go build and see if I can, like, because I'm not.
So she lives, uh.
Yeah.
It sounds like she lives just south of Renwick on the Blacktop there, on Highway seventeen.
Okay. Well, good luck with that.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Yeah, I would say, uh, when she does end up starting, I'll end up bringing her in to.
Actually introduce you guys.
It's nice when we can help somebody to get.
Yeah.
All right.
On the weekend goes, I see you. Had some water wash the shoulder off of Brad Gate.
Yeah, it wasn't, uh, wasn't quite like the lake down here at, uh, Ivy.
No.
Or, uh, there's a picture floating around of. Place with the loading dock up by Laverne where water was cleared up to the height of the loading dock, not sure where that was at.
Wow.
I don't know if it was the elevator where, but. Um, what we had at Brad Gate was a lot of. Field water comes funneling through and dumps out to the road ditch there. Oh, the road ditch is. Kind of full and being used as a driveway right now, so it ran as far as the road where there was a little bit of a drop off. Which needs to be edge rooted.
Mm-hmm.
And it just turned and started cutting there, and I'd say the deepest spot is probably eighteen to twenty-two inches deep.
Wow.
And about the width of a tire. So, uh, we're in the process of trying to get that filled right now, Tom's heading out there with a load of rock and. A blade, and then our guys are heading over with loader and the broom to try and get the.
The.
Remains are swept off, but we'll get it filled in this morning.
Seen Mike was working on the hill too, there's a pretty good trench.
Yeah, there was a pretty good cut there. So he's gonna try and pull the material back in and. Create enough.
Yeah.
Slope on that, that maybe it quits cutting right next to the edge of the road.
Do we even have that kind of rain, what, three, four years?
At least.
Been a while.
At least.
A while.
When I first started, there was a lot of rain.
Yes.
And then it's just like, nothing.
Yep, yeah, yeah, I think we've had one bigger rain that like that, like Sandy said, probably within about the past four years, otherwise we pray for an inch of rain.
We've been dry.
So this soaked things up pretty good.
Yeah.
But other than that, we didn't have any.
We didn't have any issues, those law enforcement called me on that one by Brad Gate about seven, Saturday morning. Ran up and looked at it, we got some barricades out there, till we could get out there today and. Get it addressed, get it fixed, so.
Perfect, well, appreciate you doing that in the weekend.
Yeah.
Never happens on a Monday.
No.
Tuesdays.
It always starts out early in the weekend.
Yeah, it was okay, Saturday's games got canceled then, mainly because of the rain.
Oh, man.
Well, it looked like yesterday was a cold day out here, I mean, it's field.
Oh, basically.
Only called soccer off.
They never call soccer.
Well, they did. That field was underwater.
Mm.
But the field over here, yesterday morning when I went to church, there was three games going and. Still at three thirty or four o'clock.
Those people are shit.
Oh.
It looked cold, really good, but fifty, that was green, that wind was blowing, so.
We got, we got done at nine last night. So, yeah.
You gotta give them some of the games in somehow. Yeah.
Probably more than that either.
It feels like it, right now.
Yes. Well, while we're waiting for nine o'clock, should we go?
Well, we got a eight fifty.
We're good.
Right on time, so.
Yeah.
You're hopefully just came in, uh, all teams.
Thanks for showing up.
You are.
We're not to letting yet.
I agree. If we, uh. We've met our allocated time as stated for the public hearing budget amendment. This is all for secondary roads.
This is for secondary roads.
I'm making a motion to open the public hearing. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Unanimous, it moves, okay, discussion on the budget amendment.
Uh, typically every year we end up having a budget amendment to. Cover over expenditure on repairs or paving projects. Um, fuel costs. Uh. I've got a breakdown here, I don't think I included that with your packet, I think I just sent the DOT's budget, but it's. It's an increase of roughly five hundred thousand, um, with two hundred thousand. Set aside in the. Seventy-one, ten, the roads category for our P sixty-three micro-surfacing that we did. Um. The reason for pulling that money ahead is Sheldon Park is scheduled to get done. Next week. So we'll end up having an invoice for that one coming in the same year, so we need to bump up our money on our paving and asphalt repairs. Uh, so that's roughly two hundred thousand. Uh, the few pieces of equipment that we purchased. That were either scheduled in next year's budget. Or weren't scheduled is roughly eighty thousand, that's the shoulder reclamer that we purchased, that rear shank ripper. Uh, the water tank and the triple tag trailer. Um. Increases in fuel, oil and repairs to equipment was another two hundred thousand. And then twenty thousand for, uh, grass seed and tools. For over expense, which ends up being roughly fifty thou, or, I'm sorry, excuse me, roughly five hundred thousand increase.
That's total.
That's total.
That's totally.
Yep.
And it's already in, but, it's in here.
It, it's in our carryover expenditures, it's on, I'm just moving it from. Pulling it from the savings account to the check.
Yeah.
Yep.
So it's nothing we haven't done.
No. That's every year, like Ben said.
Yep, and it's to stay in the better graces of the DOT, I mean, they have a.
They're allocating it rather than this.
They have a limitation that you have to, you can't spend more than, I think it's ten percent on. Four separate line items, and this is to stay within that.
Ten percent.
That range.
I can hear.
Okay.
Well, that's a pretty good synopsis.
Yeah.
So do we have?
Any, was there any public?
Yeah.
Have you heard anything?
I haven't heard anything from anybody in the public.
Okay.
I'm making a motion, close public hearing.
Second.
Yeah, we got a motion in a second, close public hearing. All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, unanimous, motion carries, all right. Next thing on the list is to adopt the resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, a resolution approving the whole. How many?
What?
Secondary road budget amendment. Just kind of went from.
Secondary road budget amendment, I would make the motion to do that.
We got two dots.
Secondary road budget amendment.
I was looking at that, we got two dots and I kind of like, wait a minute here, one stopped and then.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second to approve the resolution twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. And we need what's.
And then I, I'll leave the, the motion to approve the secondary road budget amendment. For.
Twenty-two, twenty.
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Oh, I did second.
Okay, I'll make the motion to. For the secondary road budget amendment for FY twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, unanimous, motion carries.
Down there, Trish.
Okay. Let me, this is, it's a resolution.
Weekend, yes.
Okay. That's, I mean, it shows what it's going.
Have you heard any more on the loss? Funds?
Uh, I have not, uh, so, I'm assuming that means that it, it died during this current legislation since they've. They've closed for the season, uh, I know it was very close. And it sounds like this is a pet project for Governor Reynolds.
Yep.
So my guess is, it's gonna be high on her priority to try and pass next year.
Yeah.
Um, if it does, it's gonna be. Detrimental to secondary roads, when we get roughly.
Both counties.
Yeah.
I just can't believe the rural counties are following the line on this, I just think that's.
Well, we're, we're not, but.
No, I mean, but the legislature, a lot of legislators are.
I, I think they're. Uninformed or underinformed on what we actually utilize this local option sales tax for.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I just don't think they're thinking of their counties very well, and.
Right.
Or the, either that or their counties supervisors aren't getting to their legislators and letting them know what's. What's really at stake.
Well, go ahead. Like you mentioned, it's probably just done for this session.
Right.
That is adequate time for said.
Conversations.
Tellings to make them aware.
Right.
How. The other thing, but particularly secondary roads, just effects.
When I reached out to Guth, uh, he wasn't aware of how. We had received local option sales tax money or how we.
Use it.
Use it.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
Right, yeah, I mean, that.
I liked it.
But if you're local often sales tackle, that doesn't really mean, oh, great, what is, the, ah, whatever, but.
Right.
Yeah, how much of an impact it has on the service side of things.
It's, for us, it's huge, I mean, we utilize roughly three hundred thousand every year. To do a. Bridge replacement or box cover, like, that's getting ready to be let, that's gonna be paid for with local option sales tax.
And also to community betterment. Right, oh, yeah.
I mean, it's that, it not.
Affect our budget.
Yes, not.
Betterment stuff, I hope, what is that, like?
Quite a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like a hundred and eighty.
It's, it's better with everything.
Well, it's the same thing with the Band-Aid, that we're getting up here on our highway. Fill in the cracks that, you got cracks that are this wide and they're filling them in, but down in Des Moines, they get new. Roads.
Concrete.
So, we just, yeah, we do what we get.
Yeah, we just need the.
This would be.
Public support too.
Trying time.
We need to get people.
To educate.
Aware, right, educate people and to get them to start giving it their legislators and sending letters and emails or calls.
It's gonna kill a lot of these small towns, cause that's what they do on their streets, lose that money for the street work and.
Yeah.
You're not gonna upgrade your streets, you're gonna all be. Rudded and cracked like the highway is.
I agree.
Legislators don't understand how. County. City work.
Correct.
Very true.
Looks like everybody's got the agenda and they're gonna roll with it.
Well, we got somebody tripping in their ear.
Exactly.
Yeah. You know.
Des Moines.
Yeah.
Big cities.
Mm-hmm. And that's why the rural ones have got to stick together.
It's no different. Out East either, they're following line with what they're doing in Washington.
Right.
So. It runs downhill.
Sad to say, but it does. But, yeah. Counties are always the bottom of the deal.
House file seven fourteen with schools with the railroad with train each, sitting on the governor's desk and she still hasn't signed it. So Doug was putting together some people to go visit with her.
That's good.
She doesn't understand that one.
I think she don't understand it or something. I don't know. Maybe she's just too busy, hasn't gotten to it yet. I don't know. That's but I mean, it passed like ninety two percent.
Can you imagine the amount of ear chewing that they hear every year when the railroad doesn't wanna do anything? Every time, almost every time.
Yeah, it's like On a brighter note. We got Dave here, so we're gonna get some good fun stuff with the box.
Should have, they should be turned into you.
Let's, I'm gonna see your letter and work.
That's well.
I know it started, yeah.
I think they trust me.
Okay, there we go. Usually there's somebody here. We have one. But I mean, usually, I know that, but I mean, usually there's there's more. That's all I mean.
The the lane, right?
This is uh, the one that we called Taliers Bridge. Uh, it's on Kentucky Avenue, southeast of Road, mile west of one sixty nine.
What was the
Uh, I think we did a late start date of next May. So give the contractor flexibility of whether or not they already had a full schedule this year or not.
It'd be done this fall and it could be done, yeah.
The first bid that we've got is from Midwest Contractor. Uh, Marshall, Minnesota. They've got a bid bond filled out. Motorized. The bid is three hundred and forty two thousand four hundred and eighty eight dollars. Three, four, two, four, eight, eight. Next bid was from PCI. Reinbeck, Iowa.
Did you say Reinbeck?
Reinbeck. Bid bond.
Yeah, we have to separate.
Keep the US Post Office in service.
PCI's bid is three hundred and thirty one thousand eight hundred and ninety four dollars and twenty five cents. Three, three, one, eight, nine, four, two, five. Last bid is from Whitman Inc. Dallas, Iowa, of Whitman here in the I would DOT bid bond. Signed and sealed. Then proposal is three hundred and forty three thousand eight hundred and seventy eight dollars. Three, four, three, eight, seven, eight. They've worked through the numbers. And uh put it on the agenda for next week to award the project.
Already being close together.
Yeah.
When they do something like this, Ben, it's up that far. Can they get pretext or whatever their name is? To put that in writing for
My guess is when they call for those, they say when they're anticipating doing construction and that's what their price is based on.
Price is very good, which is a lot of time.
I know anytime I call them and ask for a price, at least here lately, you know, they've only been given guaranteed price for a couple of weeks. You know, I mean, just because of cost of materials.
You don't know what actually is gonna be then.
Yeah. Apparently low was three thirty one. I wanna say
Between bids, it's pretty close.
Yeah, it's very close. I wanna say my my rough estimate, my budget number was like three twenty five. Okay.
Thank you.
Somebody around here or someplace else.
Man, it's company.
Oh, Midwest.
Oh, PCI.
Oh, PCI. All right, let's see, we need to go on to approve the three-year contract with cost advisory services. Okay, so this is for um cost allocation plans for the DHS and they track how much is spent with them and get that money for our county. And this is a three-year contract, like it says. And let's see. It did increase this year to of seven point eight eight percent.
So they go off percentage of what they spent, huh?
And then they I know other counties have been talking about this and
They went up, their fee went up seven plus percent?
Yeah, point eight eight and as does everything. I think So what's if it's going up seven point eight, what's what's it? Four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars per year. Okay, four thousand, was it again, I'm sorry. Four hundred and fifty. Four hundred and fifty per year. Wow.
That's the total that went up, but that's
Yeah, and that's per year, not for the three years. Well, there's no way out of it or around it, is it? You need to have them do the service.
Yeah, we wanna get DHS money, we gotta do it, but it's
Well, what what happened?
Yeah, exactly.
Some stuff's gone up more than that. Make the motion to approve the three-year contract. Second.
Here we get a motion in a second.
Four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars per year.
Per year.
Oh, discussion?
Any discussion?
Is that four thousand four hundred and fifty?
Locked in.
Locked in? Okay, just to clarify, so at least
Yeah.
You know, that's
If it's a contract, it has to be.
So it fits the makeup on the fourth year.
Yeah, exactly. All right, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous it carries, all right. Accept and place on file the Humboldt County Jail inspection report. Yeah, Ethan, did you, everybody get this or? Everybody. There was a letter. All right, let me get my letter, but I thought I forwarded it to everybody. I'm sorry, everybody. The guy gave us a glowing review. Yeah, he said for the age of the um Did you do print letter out? Delbert.
Hey, as long as everything's good.
Gave a glowing report, um, said that um, the jails run very well. And that they're doing a great job. And why can't I find it?
They do. Not a lot of time keeping things up to date in jail.
Comments and recommendations is um, the documentation appears to be complete and readily available for vital or virtual inspection Humboldt County's jail is older facility that is very clean and well maintained. He wished to express some appreciation to Chief Deputy Lambbeak and the jail staff for their assistance and cooperation and inspection. Thank you.
Sounds like a
It sounds like the glowing tell.
Well, we do have a pretty old hole most of the time, too. Fortunately, so with all that, I make a motion that we do accept and place on file Humboldt County Jail Inspection Report.
Okay.
Well, second.
Do you have a motion and a second and any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimously carries. There it is.
Found it.
I know, that's a cost allocation, like Yeah, it's like this is a cost allocation, sign. All right, approved, see liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales for Humboldt County. Country. This is to the annual review. Yes, for outdoor sales and Sunday sales and everything is as it always is with them. You do deserve a Yes.
Motion to approve glassy liquor license for the country. I'll second.
The motion is second, all those in favor? Unanimous carries.
Might put on for the record, the assessor's office will be closed Wednesday, the seventeenth. For training.
All right, that was nice. Okay, since we got to that, committee reports, Dave?
Uh, Wednesday, the tenth, down to the mobile food pantry. And uh, we started at four thirty and by five ten, we were out of food.
Wow.
Holy smokes, you're shoveling out. It went right on out.
Same amount.
I'm not sure, how many did you get a?
Yeah, she sent me the numbers there.
I mean, the same amount of food was brought in?
Yeah, I think so, and she upped it to the next time she did.
Yeah, we had two or three people come in after that and we were out of food.
Wow.
Is that, have you heard of that pasta going away?
Well, I mean, with the strain on everything, it's getting tougher to to get it's it's hurting.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know what we're I don't know what we're gonna do. I don't think anybody else knows, has a plan either. You just thank God they return the truck pulls in, delivers the food that you requested, so.
Also, on the the tenth, they had a animal shelter meeting. That's it for me.
Eric?
On Monday, the eighth, uh, that afternoon, I had a de-categorization board conference call. Need to wrap up a couple of things from the previous meeting. And then uh, Tuesday, the night, that morning, we had a Public Safety Commission meeting at eight o'clock. And now my two official events. Tuesday morning, I had the public safety meeting. Wednesday evening, I had the animal shelter meeting on tape. And then Thursday morning, I had a mini bank I with the Humboldt County Economic Bill. Ready in the morning. That was it for me.
Was that good one?
Well, you know, that's This, you know, we talk a lot about workforce. You know, we talk a lot about that. And and uh, sometimes a lot of it is funding for startup businesses, which is confidential.
Yeah.
So
Yeah.
But there is, there are some things happen.
Isn't some of their funding being cut, though? I thought I heard something about that at the
I don't know about that, Sandy.
Okay, I thought I heard something about that. At one of the meetings of economic development was getting, some other stuff was getting
That's very possible, because they're cutting back here and there, everywhere funding.
Yeah.
And then, like you said, a few conversations with John forward. About House File seven fourteen, so they're putting together a group of people to go visit with the governor to find out why she hasn't signed it now.
Yeah.
I have been, uh, Diane O'Connor, uh, sent me the numbers for the mobile hood pantry, it was uh, for Humboldt. Um, they had ninety four families, two hundred and five individuals, four veterans. Humboldt Homes had forty five families, fifty five individuals, two veterans, Livermore. Had thirty four families, seventy seven individuals, zero veterans, for a total of a hundred and seventy one. Uh, fan, or excuse me, a hundred and seventy four families. Three, three, six individuals and six veterans. She had thirty three um, volunteers that were down there, so you must have had a good group of people. And she said she has requested um, next time for a little bit more food, uh, hopefully um, they'll honor the request. I had, I went to that meeting up here at one thirty with the Dean and Randy and and uh, for the nuisance deal out here. Trying to put our action plan in order, um, according to the way the meeting left, or we left the meeting that Mr. Beatty was going to put a letter together um, to mail to be delivered by um, the Sheriff's Department in order to put a date out there somewhere. Uh, wasn't it to the sixteenth of was it August? If I remember right, sixteenth of August is kind of a date that we picked that would give him twelve, fourteen, fifteen weeks, something like that. To make an effort to um get rid of stuff, because the DOT is uh on him about infringing on their uh, riot roadway, um, so we gave him the the fifteen weeks. That way he can either line up to get someone to take the stuff or thinking he can haul it or whatever his thoughts are. And we'd still have a time, a cushion from the fifteenth of August to before the snow flies. Because something is gonna get done. Because something is gonna get done and, um. I guess Dean is under the assumption that if we keep moving this thing forward, then we at least, uh. Keep the pressure on him, um.
Well, if you give him a date. That helps. Well, if he keeps saying, like you say, well, we're gonna do something, we're gonna do something, it doesn't mean a lot until you give him a date.
You gotta have a deadline.
You, so that's good that you got that in there.
And Dean had the, um, a lot of pictures and whatnot for, for, um. That have been taken and, and I guess. He's got the stuff that was on, um. Erickson's property moved off, so dial to. Do his farming, um. Trailers that were sitting out on his field and whatnot, so. All in all, we had a good meeting, um, Nate was here also for the public health. Uh, so. That was when we come in here and here's the, they were doing their order of reviews, so. We had, oh, which is another thing that reminds me, um, the elevator that. Button. We need to make sure that button's repaired or replaced because if we have court and someone needs to get up there in like a wheelchair.
Paul has it, it's. In the works.
Ordered.
They are waiting for, for part.
Well, Dean and I, we went up the second floor and then you had to walk up to the top where we had our meeting, so. Dean comes up. Like, I feel your pain, buddy. So anyway, hopefully that will get fixed and. That we can have, if there's court and someone needs to get up there in a wheelchair, so. That's all I had.
That's all you had? Okay, Monday, the eighth, um, I had a Zoom meeting with, um, our workforce development regarding North Central Iowa. Transition for the, um. Money that we'll be giving back, that the state will be responsible for. So what they're going to be doing is they're basically, since Southwest is leaving, Western Iowa is leaving. Northwestern and North Central, they're gonna make that all one, um, area. So they've got, um. People out that, you know, if they're interested in, get on their website and you can. Apply, a lot of the people from Children's Family Services of Iowa, they're gonna be applying for those positions. Um, since they've already been doing.
A lot of people are gonna be out of.
Right.
Jobs.
Well, a lot, they're gonna be hiring a lot of the people.
Yeah, they'll get moved somewhere else, but you could get eliminated.
Right, you could, um, they're, they are, you know, they're combined with the, the different ones, so. Um, it looks really good for a lot of the Children's Family Services of Iowa people because they've been working with it for several years already. Um, so they're, they're working on that. Um, and. Then also, um, at one o'clock on. Tuesday, the ninth, I had another, um, Zoom meeting with, for Iowa Workforce Development. It's just getting everything, yeah, it's just getting everything together. And that one was with the Department of Labor. So. That's all I have.
And you are gonna go attend that meeting, right?
Oh, the, um, opioid, yes, I'll be going to opioid. The twenty fourth and we'll be heading down that night, the twenty third, and then it's the twenty fourth and twenty fifth.
Means we're part of the settlement.
Yeah, we're part of the settlement, so I'll be going.
They're having a meeting in Des Moines for.
Yep.
How, I suppose, how you can use your funds and.
Use your, what you can use your funds for when you can't and. Um, so I'll be going, going down for that.
Even if you cannot change anything.
Yeah, yeah, on the very back, you know, you have to sign it.
Well, thank you for doing this.
You bet, you bet. All right, so we already announced the Census Office is closed, was there anything else?
Yes. Just while you. But, uh, obviously, as we've talked about, the biggest amount of rain we've had in some time. We've encouraged, uh, you know, farmers, landowners, when it dries up, get out and just take a look at things. Make sure this didn't create any issues or problems with anything related to drainage.
In holes that appeared.
Yeah, and obviously you would to help with the drainage districts part of it, but then you may have some private tiles, you may have something. Uh, just a reminder that after this rain event to check things over. So that if there is any needed repairs, they can be done sooner than later.
Sounds good.
And Dave, we're doing. Is it this weekend you're doing the flags at the, for the cemetery or the next?
This weekend, I'm on Saturday cemetery.
So I'm going to reach out and see if we can get some young legs. For, uh, because by the time you walk some of those cemeteries, there's quite a few, um.
There's a lot of, a lot of walking. Everybody wants their exercise, come on down to the cemetery and we'll. Give you flags and you can go to it.
And we just go out, find the, uh, military markers and you push the.
Take it in the ground beside it.
And I guess the other thing I would say for, and I did it last year helped, but the. Just to see some of the dates on some of those older stones up in the. Old area, I mean, it's mind boggling to see the. The dates on some of those.
So, isn't it?
Yeah.
That's a long time ago.
Yeah, they've been there a long time, so it, it'd be nice to get them. Flags put on all of them, so we appreciate your help. Then the following week will be.
Memorial Day and the week after we'll start taking them back down. Reason why we're taking them down, I just ordered two hundred and eighty eight more flags. They jumped from about seventy six cents a piece up to a dollar thirteen a piece. So that's why we're gonna take them back off the graves. Cause they're getting just too high priced to, uh.
Yeah, they have to replace them.
That's, that's our cost on it plus shipping, so.
Yeah. Well, a lot of places pick up the, the flowers, you know, because of, I mean, it's the cemetery. Yeah.
I'd like to leave them up year round for the veterans, but. At that price, I just can't leave them up.
Yeah.
I gotta take them down. Save some money someplace, yeah.
Unless we get somebody to. To donate the.
How many was?
How many you got?
How many do we put out? Somewhere around a thousand.
Wow.
Just a rough estimate. But, uh. A lot more people are getting involved, we're getting more cemeteries wanting flags. And we have been getting a few donations for flags, so.
I was gonna say, we need to make an appeal, but they would, people would donate for that, that'd be a, a good cause to donate for.
I just ordered damming a bunch of other flags, it was over a thousand dollars, I think it was eleven hundred and some dollars with the flags I ordered. And they're already gone. So. And we may not have enough of these small ones, I may have to order some more. So if you see some with painted red or brown. On the stem, that's the ones that gets picked up. That's all I got.
That's all, you got anybody else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion to adjourn, one second, all those in favor?